The item will link to the Madrona contract, probably in January.
Second. Any discussion by council on this? Any discussion?
I think this item can be moved to January. We have a lot going on with budget right now and other things. I just think it can wait.
Any further discussion? You have a motion on the table to revoke the item from the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. All right. Moving on, if there are any council members that would like to speak this evening, it's not on the agenda, but I'd love to talk about it. Seeing none. Do we have a motion to adopt this evening's council agenda?
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. With that, moving on, comments from the audience. Well, we have one person signed up for public office. His name is Elizabeth Hill. She's in the back room here.
Fair enough. I also just speak my language. I didn't know that, sorry.
She's decided not to?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll scratch that and we'd like to see who's in first party with the language.
My name is Richard Bowman. I live at 27127 Northeast Stewart Street in Fall. I came down tonight because about three or four years ago, I was spending time at council meetings over and over, and we had different council members at that time, and I had some pretty severe concerns for us city. And I am very excited and thankful for our city mayor, Eric Proten, our council, because they're having active discussions, because they've seen a problem, they're working on the problem, they're moving through it, they're having discussion. This is positive for our city, because the budget is extremely important. My household, I take care of my budget. That, whatever goes out, gotta come in. And you guys are doing the same thing. You guys are actively going after it. The city itself is working really, really hard. I remember way back in the beginning, we started losing finance dreadful all stuff that was going on back then. And all that time period until now, you guys are actively working on it, and I believe you'll make a positive change as a team. I just wanted to thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, moving on to new business. Agenda Bill 19-93, approved resolution supporting continuation of the Employee Wellness Program for discussion and review. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I almost skipped over that. So not much on the agenda this morning, or this afternoon. As folks are aware, the Human Services Grant Committee ad hoc has been formed. The clerk will be sent out applications for grants to nonprofit agencies over the next few days. However, I think folks are well aware that we've had some nonprofits that have been doing some really important suicide prevention and mental health first aid seminars in our community, which really, to me and staff, defines the really key purpose of human services grant funding. The organizations have already paid for, have already conducted this funding. And so I just wanted to bring it for discussion, and if councils and concurrence bring forth at the next meeting an agenda bill to suspend the rules to distribute $2,000 to San Juan Valley Community Network to support the youth mental health first aid courses, and then do the formal grant process for the remaining $18,000. So I would like some feedback, so that I know if I should be moving the agenda bill forward this week. Councilmember?
Can I just get more information about?
We can send you the invoice, we'd be happy to. So if you, I think most of that information, we can also put it in the agenda bill, but I'm not outright in the agenda bill, as others support for moving it forward. You know, if there are police to speak, I know what Caddie has been working very closely with San Juan Valley Community Network and trying to support them in any way possible. So you know, if there's interest, I am happy to bring the agenda bill forward if more information.
One of my thoughts initially is that usually, they get a portion of the grant anyways, correct? So maybe like, for instance, in a typical year, they might get up to $10,000, is what they used to get. So by doing this, you're just, you know, is there some other ways we can find $2,000 instead of taking another grant? Is one way of the thought?
There are, however, in general sections with staff, there was concurrence that it was most appropriate to take out the funding that's already allocated. That does not preclude council from increasing the total amount available in that line item during our first quarter mention.
I actually think that council talked a little bit about that. When we were going through deliberations about moving the 2019, 2020 money forward in expedited manner, we acknowledged that it did not preclude increasing that amount of money.
Yeah. But this is simple, it's literally a suspending of the rules, so that we can get that funding to the organization now, before year end, rather than waiting until mid-February, when the whole grant process is over. But it's, because that's about the point, that it's likely to be at council decision. You agree with that?
I just recommend, we've got a lot of money in our community, and I think council's showing a lot of support for that already. We had some community gatherings, and council helped fund a lot of the funds, helped support that personally. But I think this is a great way for us to really let the community know, you know, let them show the priorities, by where you put your money in. I think for many of us, trying to get that money out the door quicker than those of you, it is really important. And we do have a formal grant process that we're initiating now and running through. But for me personally, if we're able to take a portion of that, not just as payoffs and expenditures, it really shows we support that mental health and our youth in our community, that we have the support for.
Can I just add onto that? I did speak to the reference users in our last year. The next biggest demographic group that's seeing an increase in senior citizens is elderly men. And so they're working on some things, not really kind of really looking to have any challenges with kids and seizures. And so I think that there's opportunity for the city to appropriately be involved, where we're not normally involved, in helping bring more of those human services-related programs to the community, where it might not necessarily be a grant, but it might be the city funds this for our community. I see that this is actually having a direct impact on our first responders, and it's a pretty big one. So anything we can do to help mitigate that and help try and find ways to decrease the challenges.
I just want to say, I'm in support of releasing the $2,000 before the full grant process. But I, and maybe I was looking at papers, but according to the schedule, I think December 15th, we're supposed to have the application available. Did you just mention it and I didn't hear it? I apologize.
Yeah, by the end of this week, we'll have that.
Okay. So if someone asks, I can direct them to?
It'll be on the front page of our website, we'll push through Facebook. I'm physically mailing a few packets out to some knowns. So if anybody has any suggested local organizations you think I should send a physical packet to, just contact information. Thank you.
Councilmember Iyer.
My first reaction is, I mean, we're looking, and it's looking to have a, make a decision, literally, like that. But enrolling with it and taking a deep breath, I mean, I think if we're just gonna, if we're gonna suspend it and allocate $2,000, I think we should just go ahead and allocate the half, $10,000. And that's consistent with what we've historically done for this agency. And I think, I mean, in the interest of cutting odds, I think we should just do that. But also, I would ask for respect to the council, that when something's brought up, like with very minimal amount of information, that it might take us a few minutes to process it and have a coherent thought to share and add to the discussion. But now that I have that coherent thought, I would say that if we're gonna suspend it, we have historically provided $10,000 to this agency, and then I think we should just do that as part of this process.
Point well taken. And just so you know, I'm not expecting council making decisions, I just think this is just to have a brief discussion to see if there's support for doing something like that. To councilmember Iyer's point, we can certainly look at releasing the entire term. We will need to look at the contracting side, because the challenge when you do release that money is they have to show direct services, that they provide direct services to the community in that process, which sometimes is easier in the grant process, and sometimes it's easier in the contract process. So we'll need to contact the agencies.
Councilmember Iyer.
So the applications are available December 15th. And then what is the due date on them?
January 15th.
Which means the ad hoc committee would convene shortly after and make a decision by?
So the final decision, so by the 5th of February, the ad hoc committee has to have their recommendations to... So January 15th they're due, January 31st staff does, between the 15th and 31st, staff does their initial review. And Sory gets all that information to the ad hoc committee. So between the 31st and the 5th, the ad hoc committee reviews all those recommendations and makes their own recommendation to council. And then by the last meeting of February, then council makes a final decision on the funding allocation.
So my opinion is, since we're so close to, I mean, we've gotten so close here to all of us getting allocated, I'm not opposed to giving out the $2,000, for sure. I think that's a no-brainer. But I would like to follow through with the process, keep it open and, you know, fair. So I think if we're gonna do that, I would rather stick to the $2,000, just since like what you're saying. I mean, there is a strong benefit, I'm assuming, to them getting this before year end. Is that what you're saying? As opposed to just waiting a couple more months for that $2,000?
That's our understanding at this point.
Okay. Then yeah, I'd be okay with doing that. But for the rest, I would just like to follow through, and, because a part of this was us being able to give some feedback on the process and changing and improving it. So I'd like to actually go through.
And just sort of reminder, the process of the last thing, the way that it was approved in the 2018 budget, there were significant challenges in distributing the money. And in fact, one of the agencies wouldn't do a contract, because then they felt that it would have provided impartial influence to the nonprofit radio station. And so they actually sent their check back and didn't sign a contract. And so, you know, this is definitely an important process of making sure that it's done right on all sides.
I have one more comment that I just thought of. I'm a little concerned, and maybe this wouldn't be an issue. Is there gonna be any hard feelings with the other organization that usually gets money? Because they also provide direct services to our community.
They work very well together, so I don't suspect that there will be. But one of the other things that I did talk to Ms. Iger last night about is that I would like to get the two of them together and talk about those levels of services. And they have, you know, been interested in applying for grants shortly in the past. So that might be a possibility for them. And they are in, they talk all the time. So I don't think that there would be any hard feelings, if possible. I can't say, speak for her, but in my past experience, I'm not expecting.
If before, sorry, one more thing. If you worked with drafting and agenda bill, could you also just reach out to them and check and make sure they know that's happening? Because I wouldn't want them to be surprised by it.
Thank you. So moving on to new business, Agenda Bill 19-93, approved resolution supporting continuation of the Employee Wellness Program for discussion and review decision.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jody Whitehoff, City Clerk. I am going to be as brief as I possibly can. So every year, except last year, because quite honestly, it's with our minds, we ask council for their support via a resolution. And as you may or may not know, we have a wellness committee made up of five employees. Five-ish, five-six-ish employees. PD shares the responsibility between Officer Gore and Fisher. It also consists of myself, Sherry James, Troy, and Seth Harrison from the wastewater treatment plant. We've been doing this since 2009, 2008. And I'm not gonna read it out loud, but we do have a mission statement that we try and abide by as well. 2019, we had kind of a turnover of people on the wellness committee, so we try to keep our plans and goals kind of realistic. Increased campaign participation, employee survey gauge interest in successes, and recruit new committee members. We were successful on the third one. The second one, we are planning on trying to get that out tomorrow during our employee quality inquiry. And campaign participation is still kind of a, doesn't work. We try, is all I'm gonna say. This is our activity schedule for 2019. Not a lot happened in May through July. It's just kind of hard to get people together during those months. But other than that, we need your help by approving this resolution. And by becoming, by meeting our requirements with AWC, we become a well city, which equates to approximately 2% of savings on our health benefits, which the last time we did the calculation was somewhere between $16,000 and $18,000. So it's a financial benefit to the city as well. And that is that.
Move that we approve resolutions for the continuation of 2019 Employee Wellness Program, date being 19-93.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Next is adopting Agenda, or Agenda Bill 19-94, dot coordinates in many municipal code, Chapter 9.04 Sanitary Super Utility and Chapter 9.06 Storm Green Utility, provided for severability in establishing an effective date for discussion and review decision. Ms. Whitehoff and Ms. Ellen Chesky.
I'm not sure if we consider the end today. I think we'll take them to the city until it's all over. Ms. Ellen Chesky, for us. Jody Whitehoff, for the office. This piece of legislation in front of you is kind of a side effect of the comprehensive development and hearing, building resolution, putting it on the agenda. So as we were reviewing everything, we noticed there were a couple pieces of code that actually specify fees that are superseded the resolution. So this is code, you know, items that are non-necessary and older and are no longer adopted as code. So you would say, if we pass the resolutions affirming all of the fees that are indexed in the item ahead of this agenda, it's non-material and non-necessary language.
And from my point here, I just wanted to point out that the budget impact to the legislative is strictly the two pages of code. I think it's going to only be like $32, but I wanted to, you know, I'm not sure if it's in the chart from that, but it's usually $16 paid during the time of two pages, so it should be cheaper.
You're referring to the online posting, or?
The actual code, the codifying process, yes.
Questions? Any discussion? Does council already make a decision on this this evening, or would you like to move to the next meeting?
I would move, council, approve Agenda Bill 19-94, dot coordinates in many municipal code, Chapter 9.04 Sanitary Super Utility and Chapter 9.06 Storm Green Utility, provided for severability in establishing an effective date.
Second.
Any discussion by council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Bill 19-96, authorize staff to purchase one unfunded, uninterrupted power source unit using a 502 information and technology budget for discussion and review decision.
Since we're sitting here, I'm thinking. Give the mayor, council, for the record, our Thomas Community Development and C administration. As discussed at the last council meeting, we have issues with our, they're called UPSs. They're essentially at an obsolete stage, and we've seen the failure in the first one with the batteries in it. And so the IT department made contact with administration and said that we need, that we need one replacement immediately, that we can work in the next minute in budget to replace the other UPS. And so what we're requesting is approval of the agenda bill, so that we can purchase the device. And it does have a budget impact, and it's about $3,200. And so we would need in the first quarter to make that adjustment to the 502 fund to acknowledge that extension.
So I'm just curious, I know that that fund does have some money that isn't very specifically allocated. Is there a reason why this couldn't just be part of their operations?
So it was interesting, because we had that very discussion last Friday when we were finishing up the agenda bill, and we went through all the line items. And because it's, it's not like we have, because there's certain bars, it's not necessarily miscellaneous, it's kind of a small tool. And there was zero budgeted under small tools. So what we'll do is we'll adjust that to put that money in there. We'll see if we can balance it with all of the other items, but we looked, and it is, it's pretty tight.
I mean, I'd like to see an offset if possible, but I always like to see stuff like that.
It's always a little...
Move that we authorize staff to purchase one unfunded UPS unit using a 502 information technology budget, date being 19-96.
Second. Any further discussion? Councilmember?
So you said that we would purchase another one, and we're talking 2021, 2022?
Correct. Unless it starts to fail or fails.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Next is Agenda Bill 19-97, approved and authorized, mayor deciding parks property tax levy agreement between King County and City Vault for discussion and review decision. Ms. Ellen Chesky.
Good evening again, mayor, council, citizen, staff. Ms. Ellen Chesky, for us. We are bringing forward the paperwork as a side effect of the countywide parks property tax levy. This was valid this year and replaces an expiring levy that annually brought the city approximately $17,000 a year for a couple of the capital parks expansion of most of sidewalks and trails. This new voter-approved proposition, six-year, I mean, $18.1832 per thousand of assessed value. It did pass the vote. And these are monies that will be used for maintaining operating city open space, parks, park maintenance, recreation, access, mobility, overarching within the county. They have changed the methodology a little bit, so it's based on population size as well as the area. City Duval shares will be approximately $116,000 per year. This is proposed as revenue without any current expected expenditure yet. We figure when we get to the process with the finance director, we'll talk about where, what, when, how, where that should go. It's quite valuable for capital as well as operations for parks. So that's what we have. And it is a six-year term, expiring 2025. We would have signed a agreement with the county, and they have already passed it. The county law is implementable and effective January 1st, as soon as we choose to sign, agree to it.
Councilmember Wendell.
Of course, this is wonderful news, so we should be celebrating. One of the things I noticed in the exhibit was that all of this is based on population assessed value, and it was representing that Duval has a 1.325 plus or minus assessed valuation in our tax base. And what's also exciting is this is 20 through 2025. And so why I think that's important is that we have bond debt that is expiring 2024, 2025. So under the assumption that our property values will stay at least consistent where they are, what's helpful for future documentation, and this is one of the things where I say, this is like a structural change in how we do our forms, and we start accumulating information for future projections. Now, you know, to me, it's like, well, we should probably be getting about $116,000 each year through the term of the levy. And if in the last common call on the revenues, we have those sort of estimates, then we start creating an ongoing council record of future revenues for us to use in financial planning. So this is not a criticism. It's an excitement, because if you take that amount of money, multiply it over the term, it really could be huge, huge positive for the city. And then the other part that I would like to see moving forward is having a better understanding of how we can leverage up not just these monies, but our park impact fees. I think we've discussed the difficulties of just small old parks. And so, you know, between park impact fees, directing those to larger initiatives, that is discussed in our comprehensive plan. And that would be really exciting moving forward, we should do a planning for this.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Iyer.
That's really, that's really exciting. It's great, isn't it?
Great. Celebrate while you can.
I do have to say, I'm surprised that this already passed, especially at the level of the increased allocation of cities may have actually been a key to that success. There were definitely things personally in the levy that I didn't approve, or didn't approve of, but the overall benefit is huge, so it's a huge win.
Yeah, $600,000 to some $1,000, not small potatoes.
It's not... Councilmember Iyer.
I think it definitely is a testament to the reasonably well-thought-out allocation of tax dollars can be favorable to citizens if they can see direct benefit and, you know, a direct line from, you know, from their pocket to its use. So I think it's a positive, for sure.
Councilmember Monatland.
I just wanted to, it mentions it in some of the documentation about the Community Partnerships and Grants Program, so that's another way, and they expanded it to allow cities to partner as well. So a city could partner with King County and a nonprofit and work together. And there is quite a bit of money available for acquisitions, development, all many different things. And just as I consider how our city ends up being the provider of recreational facilities for the unincorporated area, this might be a good opportunity for us to partner with the unincorporated residents and really work together to see if we can get an investment here through that community partnerships and grants. And I, Redmond Bridge has received a substantial amount of money. I think two different times they've received money to improve their field up there. Lots of other examples. And there really hasn't been anything up in our area. So I think we'd have a really good shot at getting some of that community partnerships and grant money. And I hope in the next year, we can really work together. And I think a big piece of getting some of that money would be having evidence of what's needed and wanted. And I know we've talked about having a parks, I can't think of the right word, not a park committee or some type of advisory group of the community, and to really open that up into the unincorporated area and work as a team. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there, because it was in the documentation, talking about that other aspect of the levy, so.
That's still on Ms. Thomas's plan list, it's a matter of capacity right now to be telling.
Right.
be going, so, um, then until those patients can want to get it going, it's just a matter of when we can. We're hoping that the staffing, uh, continues getting up to where it needs to be, that , um, can provide some additional space for, for, for use priorities on everybody's.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Oh, we got aye motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, we got a motion.
I move that we approve and authorize a parks, uh, parks property tax levy agreement between King County and City of Duval, AB nineteen ninety-six.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Next up is agenda bill nineteen dash ninety-eight, ordinance pending chapter four dot oh eight of the municipal code for discussion and or decision, council.
So, um, this was brought forward, so this part of the code has to do, um, the process we go through with reclassifying positions, and we're asking for this to be repealed. Um, and basically, this was written in nineteen eighty-nine, it, that is a long time ago. We need, definitely should reconsider redrafting this portion of the code. Um, it's not very clearly written, um, and it's actually conflicting with our budget codes. So that's why this is coming forward right now. I just think that, um, I'd love to hear how the rest of council feels about it, but I think we.
Councilmember Landell.
Um, I agree that this section of the code needs to be repealed. Um, and, you know, just for context, I, I looked up the population of Duval in nineteen ninety and the population today, and the population of Duval in nineteen ninety was approximately twenty-seven hundred people. So it's understandable that, you know, decisions were made differently in those days. But now we have seventy-eight hundred people, and we're on the brink of getting ten thousand people because of modeling development in our pipeline. So I think that this is very timely. The second piece I want to say is that we understand that replacement of something repealed is something that has to be expedited, and that is something that should be a collaborative process with the mayor. So my feeling is this should be a top priority right after the first of the year, to put a new replacement in place. The mayor should work with us to do that, um, so there is collaboration. Uh, of course, that's your choice whether you want to or not, but I, I think that's the best way to approach, um, addressing a code provision that is, you know, just simply out of date. And then the other part of this is the council, you know, prior to my time, but certainly continuing, very much wants to do long-term financial planning. And the best way to do that is to have a better understanding with the personnel expenses, salary waivers and benefits. And right now, we have a situation where our code is extremely limited, and there are other places that have more specific procedures for how classifications and so forth occur. And the, the reason for doing this, long-term financial planning, really is to protect our employees. We cannot control an economic downturn, but it is inevitable. It's happened before, and not in the past, but not in the far distance past. We had a situation where the city had to dip into their, uh, reserves to keep people employed, and good financial planning will prevent that, it will protect the employees more than disruption. So we can expedite this quickly, uh, we can do that in collaboration with the executive and their staff, uh, and I think we can have a far better, more clear code. So that's why I support this repeal.
Councilmember Ira.
I think, um, I think the spirit of it is definitely, I, I'm supportive of in terms of, uh, similar to budget, um, just the budget details that we're working out now to the FTEs and including those in, and it's, I think it's a pretty, um, I think it's just a change, it's just a different way of doing things, and I think it's, I, I take it simply as that, it's just, uh, kind of helps clarify things. Um, I just, I, I kind of wonder if we could potentially, I definitely would like to seek to have a brief and productive conversation about it and, um, balloon this one, uh, but yeah, I wonder if we could, for the interim solution, amend the code in a, in a way to, um, call out something relatively straightforward in terms of, um, adding a couple of lines. It might not be perfect, because I think there's things like job descriptions that you don't want to be, um, that are, are more administrative, there's a lot tied up here, but I would just, the concern is that you, if by repealing C completely, you kind of end up in a more braised, um, situation. So I guess I would defer to clerk lawyers, how you would, if you could use a similar ordinance, or it would have to be a completely different ordinance to amend this section of code to add language such as, uh, starting at one, two, three, five, where it says head to the chief administrative officer for approval by council, adding for approval by council. And I realize it's not perfect, what's been in there hasn't been perfect for a lo, a long time, um, but I think that might get, get us to a bridge where there's just not, not a blank space there, um, but then also kind of move the process forward in a short , incisive way.
I'm really glad that you brought it up.
Can we have other councilmembers speak to us first, you want, then someone else?
I just want to say that's a great idea, and I would be supportive of that. I, I think, you know, there was a little bit of hesitation of repealing and leaving kind of nothing. And so if, if that's something that legal feels could be, um, a potential interim solution to get a more robust policy, I think that is a great idea.
Councilmember McHenry and then councilmember Landell.
Yeah, I, I share that concern, not with my only hesitation, and, you know, what is the process if we take that out, understanding there in their interim before we can, uh, so if we can edit it somehow, change it somehow, that could probably be my preference.
Uh, we're, I'm fine with that. Um, we, we went through a number of iterations on this issue, and one of the iterations was language, well, first off, was not addressing the code issue, and then we became more aware that there was a code issue. Our original discussion as committee members was creating more of an interim process for things to come back to council, and, and, and being really super clear about that, that there's no gray. And, um, and there were really, there were a couple of specifics, um, this happened after, after the November twentieth financing administration meeting. Um, and so we, we were letting, I call them backwards. You know, you, you create a, a policy intent, but you also provide for exceptions. So if what you're talking about can be prepared, it'll, it'll matter where there is a methodology for how these things get looked at on a short-term basis, um, and, you know, councilman now has always done some research on what that future process would be that's in other codes, then I'm good with that. What I don't want to see is this debate about, you know, what's going to happen, what's in, what's out. I think it's, I think it's terribly disruptive in the budget process. And, you know, let's just look at the one position that had been debated, which has to do with the accounting position at point seven five. Um, it's budgeted at that point, if it flows through at that point, then it doesn't become an issue. But if we start messing around with positions and there's long-term financial implications, then it becomes a long-term, you know, council concern. So if we can figure that out, I'm fine. It looks like she's over there working on it.
Councilmember Ira.
And, and to be clear, I think folks have, you know, think, how, 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 how the Duval's operated has, has been sufficient until now, and I think that we're just, and it's a proposal to change, and I, uh, you know, want to commend staff and all the past folks for, you know, being part of a small city that has figured out ways to make things work. And, um, and I think, I see this as a stopgap to further effort, um, that would provide additional tools for clarity. Um, I, I think the perfect, you know, sometimes being the end is good, and I think focusing on a singular point, and, and I definitely don't want to dive into specific, uh, positions, because like I said, I think, I think staff's done a great job in terms of assessing and providing opportunity and, and doing a great job of, of being, um, creative and, and making these work. And so I think the one thing is that that larger process could, I mean, it could be, it could be very big, um, and hopefully, uh, we find a middle ground, um, that we can get through it in a timely manner that's not, uh, cumbersome. But in the short term, I think that that might be a decent solution, is mineral ore addition.
So with your specifically distal, you know, I like to get very specific about, so what you're recommending, I mean, I don't have language in front of me, so I'm trying to follow here. So what you're recommending is amending the existing section four, uh, and she's over there looking at it. To do, I, I want to be sure I'm understanding, specifically, how would you envision that wording?
Adding, uh, at the end of, at the end of line five, section C, line five, after officer, adding for, uh, for approval by council.
Okay, that looks good.
Councilmember McHenry, have I heard you?
Oh, yeah, I did.
Oh, you did, okay. I'm sorry, you're first, I'm last, and then I have some comments I'd like to add.
Well, firstly, thank our members on the, uh, coming in, coming in, bringing this forward. And Matt, I really appreciate you trying to bring some over. I don't like to remove a code unless it gets outdated and it's not needed, we need to get rid of it. But when you start pulling a code and don't have something to replace it, uh, it does leave some void, um, and, and so if we find language that fits everybody, I'd certainly be supportive of that. Uh, I looked at more than a dozen cities around us, and it's really, there are places outdated and could use some updating. I hate to rush through that process, we have one councilmember who's not here. Generally, we take our time and come up with language and we do it in one move. I understand the concerns related to the budget, but I also, um, had to get to a point where while I can agree with many councilmembers to bring this forward and approve it, I also have to balance it with my own heart, uh, recognizing that I also want to recognize the mayor's, uh, need to be able to manage the city within the budget. Um, and in my own career, I've seen many challenges when you start making decisions further away from where the work's getting done, and that, um, often doesn't go as well as having people that are fully engaged with staff. So I'm not trying to pick up on all the controversy with it, but just simply saying that I would prefer if we don't have language tonight that everybody agrees on, that we take our time, wait till the first of the year and do this. Um, you know, I trust that all of us understand the importance of this collaboration, and if we don't get this together, we're going to have a very rocky road. Uh, I trust the mayor when she said that she is, is willing to do a pause, and we're not going to be adding additional personnel, whether it's city administrator, taking the point seven five finance person to full-time, or even the, uh, parks position until we've had a chance to get the budget, numbers that we need to trust. And, uh, and I, I think it's just good business to talk to each other and work through that. And I can come down on either side, and I think I could make the argument on either side, but at the end of the day, for me personally, I spent too much time in my life trying to build teamwork and seeing how effective teamwork and communications moves a ton forward, and I, that's where I came down from. So while I don't disagree with, with the move that other councilmembers may like to make, I try to look at that long-term impact, and I want to make sure that we continually, continually move with our administrative staff, the mayor, and council in the positive direction. And I don't know if the message that we're sending is, is the best here. Um, so I, I would prefer if we have language that we think we'll get and see if we can agree on, otherwise I think I have a real challenge right now to just leave it in play tonight.
Right. Councilmember Landell.
Yeah, I, I was involved in building a lot of things. If there's one thing I learned is when you have a construction project, you're not, you know, there's one way an architect designing some of the stairs, but there's a lot of ways to build it. And the reason we put this forward, I won't speak for them, the reason I wanted this come forward to us to, frankly, to force this discussion. And if there's another way to get there, I'm fine. I just want us to get there. And if, if positions are constantly moving partners, you can't manage a budget as a council, and that's the blow. So if we, if there's another means and method to build that set of stairs, I'm good. But to not get some handle on this issue is not good, it's just not good. And that's why I think putting this forward in this manner was necessary.
Councilmember Henry.
Somebody, councilmember Hope, said, um, you mentioned that this bit of code conflicted with our budget notes, so I was curious to hear your thoughts on if we add the, um, for council approval, I think is what councilmember Ira said, does that seem to be in line with what you're doing there with the budget notes?
I'd have to ask Hillary, because she's in that, mentioned it to me.
Um, I don't have a budget notes in front of me.
Oh, I do. Oh, yeah.
There were these other budget notes that conflicted with this, so then how could we?
I think Eric called the budget notes in something like the mayor or staff or, no one shall create a new position without.
It was a should.
Yeah.
It was a should with a shall.
There was a should.
I know the first one was should, the second one was shall.
But yes, there was a should. Yeah. Yeah. Councilmember Ira.
And, you know, I think you, that you have, you add a code that says approval by council, I mean, those, those things could come through in the budget, I mean, that, you know, that would be encompassed in the budget, and I think too, councilmember Landell, that would be, I mean, it would definitely, would want to encumber the process, but it would be maybe make it, uh, slightly more patient and, uh, like go to the mid-buy, um, or the, uh, the budget, and it could be part of that, and, and in that process be approved, um, that would be my.
Councilmember Hope and then councilmember Atherton.
So if you look at the city of Duval, they do have, and I, I couldn't find it right this minute, of course, but they do have specifics on that reclassifications, uh, should happen during the budget process or during the mid-buying budget approval. So it's just something to think about, I don't know. Um, but if we say for council approval, that, you know, everything would have to come through us anyway, so that would cover it, but still, it would be nice if they only came during the budget process so we could manage a budget.
Councilmember Atherton.
So I just wanted to say, I am always wary of doing something knee-jerk or not the norm, so I always want to look, what are other cities doing, kind of cities similar size, similar structure? And when I looked, it really did feel like it is pretty typical that reclassifications either happen during deliberation of the budget or it's brought to council. And I, I, you know, found many, many agenda bills in cities similar size to us where, you know, when there was a request for reclassification, and it just, you know, it was a semi-formal process where they just explained why and what the budget impact was, and it was very straightforward. Um, we have a pretty small city, there's really, I mean, I would think it'd be very unusual to be having these types. There's really, I mean, I would think it'd be very unusual to be having these type of requests frequently. So, um, I just wanted to say that, but I, I never want to do something knee-jerk, that it's really, well, how do other cities handle this so that there isn't a conflict? And, um, so it seems pretty straightforward.
So first off, I would like to say that I've had conversations with three council members and we have very clear that, well, code says I can do something that I don't go and make big, big changes without coming and talking to council. Um, I did hear concern about the routine standard internal promotions that are looking for bargaining agreements while staff did talk about it to council. Some things slip people's memories, which is completely understandable with the level of information that we receive each time. Um, and I have offered compromises there specifically to make sure that, that council's getting informed in the interim of these. One of my biggest concerns, um, besides, and I'll go into the list of potential impacts of this, uh, is that this was added onto the agenda without following council procedures. It was brought forth by three council members and out discussion by the council. And there has, is no public process to this. And typically, when we change ordinances and the way that the city operates, there's typically at least a public process and not one touch and potentially opportunities for public hearings. In this case, if I take myself out of my role, even put myself back in council role, uh, when I was a council member, one of the things that I really pushed for and was really important is when you make changes that impact the operations of the city, and this is actually, seems small, but it actually is a pretty major change at this point, um, that the public has an opportunity. Um, you're, you're proposing changes to, uh, separately elected positions, legal authority that has existed, and we all agree that code needs to be changed. In fact, um, we have a personnel policy that's now on hold because of these discussions and have, and have previous incumbent councils repeal that entire portion of code so that we can move forward with that personnel policy. Um, and, you know, I have agreed to collaborate. Uh, I've offered things up and I, you know, whilst, as I've discussed with council members, while I have expressed my legal authority to do things, it doesn't mean things are done that way. A prime example is department directors and the hiring process. Our code specifically states that it's the mayor and staff that make that hire and go are on that hiring committee. To be inclusive and transparent and make sure we're making the same, the right hires for the city, we have purposely included council members of all those committees for director positions. That's an example of code says one thing, but I'm doing something extra. And I don't have any issues with, um, you know, I think, you know, from the council members I've talked to, we all agree that there are things in here that need to be updated. Uh, part of the challenges, many of the examples that I've had seen are city manager forms of government, so things do operate differently. Uh, for council's information, I have sent out an email to many of the strong mayors within King County to find out what they help with their processes. Because I think it's important to not just look at the council manager forms of government, but also those that have strong mayors. So on to some of the technical side of it. You know, we, I think that the ordinance is written, uh, definitely has some issues. Uh, and it's not clear that there's been a careful review, especially when the ordinance being drafted and submitted to the city on Friday and expected to be voted on four days later, um, that there has been a careful review entitled for. Uh, there's no staff analysis included in this, uh, which I think is important, especially when you're changing authority of, uh, whether it's directors or elected officials. Uh, and then it may have unintended consequences or impacts and cause confusion with limitation of other provisions in the DMC. Specifically, one of my big concerns is that, um, all promotions that, promotions that have happened have occurred within existing collective bargaining agreements within the city. And there may be possible impacts on collective bargaining laws. And in fact, we did consult on that law on this issue because that is our job, um, to make sure that we're reviewing this. Uh, at the very least, it was recommended that council should add language to the ordinance as follows. Section four collective bargaining rights, provided this ordinance shall not eliminate or abridge the city's obligation when required by Washington's Public Employees Collective Bargaining Act, RCW 4156, that set to engage in collective bargaining with certified bargaining units over any changes to wages, hours, and working conditions, nor shall abridge the rights of many employees or obligations of the city that may be set forth in any collective bargaining agreements which the city has party. This is important because we, I think, especially as we are heading into union negotiations, it needs to be clear to both the unions that it doesn't impact our collective bargaining agreements. And that's very important because those collective bargaining agreements often supersede what we have in some of our DMC. Um, and those agreements are previously approved. Additionally, uh, we definitely have concerns regarding, uh, the effects on employee morale. Placing sole authority for reclassifications, uh, that are within the existing budget in council's hands could give employees the impression that reclassifications will be political rather than merit-based. Additionally, the ordinance may affect supervisor's ability to manage their staff appropriately. If reclassifications are solely up to council, then staff may feel that they work under the direction of the council, not their department. Finally, we have concerns about the ordinance is written. From an efficiency perspective, all minor administrative reclassifications that were previously handled and bargained by the administration will now need to go to council. This additional back and forth is going to result in higher use of staff resources and possibly higher collective bargaining costs. We do have an alternative to consider as well. Um, and mind you, that this ordinance, because of collective bargaining agreements correctly hung on, is certain that it affects fewer than 10 positions in the city. So it also impacts a very small amount of people with a big, um, potentially permanent solution. So one of the things that we've discussed internally that might be another alternative besides what I've already offered council, and I did offer a center memo, and I didn't hear back from someone, uh, one of the people I talked to on that, and then of course it came up again today and the timing was too late. Uh, but of course, I'm also happy to put these things in writing. It doesn't bother me at all. So as an alternative, we would also like to ask, consider limiting the ordinance to reclassifications of paying greater than 10% of position salary to avoid all minor issues having to go to council. As Ms. Thompson mentioned, if you have an employee working out of class right now and that looks to be more long-term, and with a new director in place, it very well would be possible that as a director and manager, she may determine that that position needs to be re-titled to accommodate for that additional responsibility that employee has taken on. I, I know from being a public employee, um, if I had to have, and trying to play devil's advocate here, um, put yourself in a position of a public employee who has been doing out of class work and has deserved a reclassification, having to go in front of a legislative body and have a legislative body make a decision on the merit of that. I think that, that definitely, um, is something that needs to be strongly considered because all of these decisions impact our staff. Finally, um, the ordinance really serves uncomfortably close to the separation of powers between executive and legislative grants. And of course, it's most certainly the council's function to create positions for private duties and establish salaries for the positions. However, the appointment of employees and oversight of administration of the city's workforce falls within the purview of the mayor and our directors. And reclassifications within council's approved budget are arguably within this purview. Because this is such a complicated issue, I really urge the city council to take a step back to engage in further public discussion of the issue and to work with us on a comprehensive review of the city's employment policies and procedures rather than a risk approach.
Councilmember Langel?
I can say a lot about this. But specifically on November the 27th, you were sitting in that chair and you told council, you told council that you were going to change an accounting position without any further discussion because it was in your authority.
I said it was in your authority.
Yes. No, but you said you were going to do it.
I said that I would do what it takes.
Yeah.
To get the necessary resources and needs managed appropriately.
And you also said that you were the only one acting in the best interest of the city. Let me continue. You did say it, uh, you continued to say you were going to hire a city manager without any involvement in council.
That's not accurate.
You were going to advertise it.
That is not accurate.
You were going to select it and you were going to bring that contract to council.
That is not accurate. I would like to correct the records to release the city administrator position.
I asked you the question.
I would like to correct the records specifically to the city administrator position, which I also had multiple one-hour conversations with council members regarding this. When that question came up, the mayor, her, Tim and I had previously met and discussed ways to try and move that position forward. Our concern internally is that if we, um, wait six months, that we're going to be, you know, a year in before we're able to bring in that position. What my proposal, what my discussion was, which I should have just said, I'm not ready to discuss that instead of getting into this ridiculous argument, because what Mike and I discussed, and what I discussed with staff specifically, and was missed in the conversation, is that what we were intending to do is update the job description to reflect what's needed in the city, come to council first and foremost, when we get that updated, when we have a timeline of when we're going to get some of this budget stuff done, and ask council's permission simply to advertise for it while we're in the process of getting the budget amended. In specifically, I also stated that no hire would be made unless there was a budget amendment, and that is a position that requires city council confirmation. So I understand a misinterpretation with conversations and the way that it came up. We were blindsided. We, Mike and I had intended to go and talk to each council member about that individually as well as the accounting position. Um, and unfortunately, it came up in a public meeting. We were blindsided. We're trying to get information out and I was literally being yelled at in the meeting. So it is a little challenging, but that is the process that we were proposing and that we had discussed. And so, um, and again, I have offered, you know, I don't go and make huge staffing decisions without talking to people at council. If we're going to, you know, so this is mayor. And I'm going to leave it at that because that is the facts and I know the code well enough to know that I do not go and create, hire for a position that is not funded, that is not limiting potentially to recruiting while that process is moving forward. And as of that point, which I was, we did not get to discuss because again, it came up prematurely, we had had that discussion internally and had not yet had the opportunity to have that discussion with our city attorney to make sure that if we ask council to do that, that we could do that within the current code and current law. And so unfortunately, the discussion got extremely heated. I was being yelled at. It is very difficult to try and get the point across and get people to listen when they're already upset at the initial outset. But that is the actual truth, and I think that others can confirm that.
Well, it's interesting that you say this because I'll give you two examples that are inconsistent, but what you have to say, please let me have the floor.
Point of order, point of order. Councilmember Langel has the floor.
This is also.
I made a point of order. I'd like to vote on the point of order.
The agenda bill.
There's a point of order on the floor.
The point of order is going back to the agenda bill?
The point of order is, I move that the point of order, that councilmember Langel has the floor.
I'm going to address the accounting position first. I brought this up the last time. Your staff came to us at the finance and administration committee and we had a very healthy discussion about the need for an accounting position being full-time. What you should be aware of is something I have expressed multiple times, is I support doing that. Okay? At that meeting, we discussed it. Councilmember Natalie simply asked for information to be brought back so that we could take a look at the budget impact. That information never came back. Now, if you're saying that your directors don't communicate to you, that is not, that's, that's disappointing if that's what you're saying. I'm not done if that's what you're saying. But I have to tell you, I do not believe that they are not communicating with you. Moreover, hold on, it's in the meeting notes. And as a manager, I would think you would at least read the meeting notes for those committee meetings. Let me go on to the, well, no, no, no. Let me give you a specific example on the city manager. You came to us with a very lengthy memo asking for our guidance on a city manager. That was months ago. We never heard anything more back from you. Let me finish. You did that. You have to take responsibility. We gave you guidance. You could have come to us anytime and from that forward and came to us with discussion around this budget, but you chose not to do that. I can continue on some more specifics if you like, because I can go through a whole bunch of stuff. Now, on the art list, specifics about the union, nothing in this changes union contracts, nothing. So, you know, and nothing about this changes positions that have already been changed. What this does is set a very clear message that we want to financially prepare for the future of the city so that we do not have to lose employees. We want to protect the employees. We're not trying to hurt employees. And quite honestly, that's been said to you so many times, it just kind of blows my mind that then you kind of rewrite the discussion. It is not our intent to do anything that disrupts employees. What it does, if, if that's happening, then that's discussion that is not involving council. It is not involving council because we have said multiple times that we are trying to financially prepare so that if there is an economic downturn, we have the resources to protect our staffing levels. We have said it over and over again. And anything that is said that misrepresents that would be extremely sad because that is not what's happening here at all. We have to have budget controls. If we don't have them, we have no fiduciary control. And, and the problem is when changes have been made, there's never anything that comes back documenting the long-term implications of those changes. And there's nothing that prevents you from doing that. You can do that. Your staff is extremely, extremely hardworking and capable of trending something out three to five years when a staffing change is made. Now, that direction comes from the mayor. That policy advice comes from us. And what we're trying to do is create some parameters so that as we continue through 2020, we don't end up in a situation with more personnel expenses than we can't explain moving forward. That's what we're trying to do here. And it's not this other long list of things, you know? And unfortunately, we have repeatedly asked you, mayor, to communicate on things on personnel. When you've come to us or when your employees have come to us and asked for our guidance, we've given it. We've given it repeatedly. We turn, have turned to your employees, our interim city manager, and said, tell us what you need. We've said it multiple times. There's been plenty of time to do that. On the property contract for the finance, for example, which you just said was a six month ordeal, in fact, it was a three and a half month ordeal. We act, we act, we have acted every single time something has, has been an important matter. So I don't want the record to show in any way that this is about your employees because it's not. It's about protecting a process in the budget.
So, uh, to that point, I'm never questioning the intentions. It is my responsibility to share the potential impact. And in fact, when we had that city administrator conversation, my record, and this is, by the way, this is really far off of the topic.
No, it's about the budget.
No, but this agenda bill is not about the budget. So incorrect raw bill orders, we have stepped through that. But I will say, in that administrative, city administrator position, um, council asked for information that we couldn't get without the city admin, without the information from finance director. As we all know, there was information, there was work that was not getting done under the interim finance director. That person is no longer here and now we have a finance director. At that point, we had one person part-time and a new payroll person full-time. Council has made it clear that they haven't trusted or, or understood financial information. In order to get that information to council accurately and make sure that council is comfortable with it, as well as administration, we need the finance director here. That's been very clear. Um, and so, you know, I, there are lots of challenges we have had here. Almost every single one boils down to finance. We have a strong, it has been well-known with this city for years, there's a long-term sustainability and resilience problem with the budget. We cannot address it until we have the right staff in place to do the proper analysis to address it. And again, you know, one of the big, big problems here with this, trying to move forward this year. this evening is I have in fact offered compromise to council members, and I have not heard from most council members on this issue. And the fact that there is no opportunity for public comment and discussion about this when you are changing the fundamental role of an elected position. And that is very disturbing to me and the people in the community that I have spoken with about this issue. Councilmember Iger.
To speak to specifics of the effort, it's my feeling that this, this has come to this point out of, you know, some level of consternation in terms of working to express, you know, looking at the budget notes, you know, we saw that those budget notes, you know, were heading towards, to try to provide direction in terms of intent. And I think we are, my personal view as a council member, it's been frustrating that our expressed concerns and have not been to effectively, to our interpretation effectively, my interpretation, effectively heated. And so I think this is part of the struggle of understanding how things work and effectively, you know, changing things moving forward. I don't think that this would conflict with the bargaining agreement. I think that that would, for example, if you had an M2, I just, I guess I don't get how that would affect if, you know, I understand how collective bargaining would turn an M2 to a completely different position and different pay scale. But perhaps there's something I'm not seeing, but I think that, I, I don't think this would result in catastrophic failure of the city. I think my biggest concern is trying to get a handle on the FTEs we have and going forward year-over-year. And I think this is one of the things that will help council see, you know, how is that just put together and see it over time and make sense out of it. I feel that we have communicated often and over the last year, and we felt somewhat at council and at councils, and I think that this is coming out of that general feeling that we're not really being heard. And so this is a way that we can be certain that we are. And for that reason, I support the effort. I would be, I'm fine if we, if we work on this over the, over the, over the next month. But I don't want to extend this out into that larger process because I appreciate that that larger process is much larger and could take a lot longer time, amount of time. So I guess in the interest of moving forward and, you know, bringing things together, I think we should just shoot for bringing this back, looking at the language. I would like to keep it simple and not add too much. I'm in favor of being bold and acting without fear because apparently there's a lot of bad code in there that, you know, isn't perfect, but we'll figure it out. So I think it gets the intent. And so hopefully we can do that and move on. So I would propose that we continue this discussion at potentially the, maybe the first of the year and have it as a specific, at the first council of the year, in the interest that the mayor has indicated that we're going to, they're going to chill on the legal term, chill on reclassifications and things like that. And again, to bring this back, I definitely want to emphasize that we appreciate the efforts of the mayor and staff to make things work and do, and work with the system they have. And hopefully we can express that this is not an effort to, to demoralize anyone, but I think it's a wise move. So with that, I think we should move to the first council meeting of 2020.
I think Hillary's okay. I'm just, I was sitting here tinkering with the ordinance as proposed, and the redlines are far more extensive than just adding a couple sentences, primarily because the original ordinance had a repealer, and you'd have to add the language in there. But secondarily, because I don't think, from what I've heard, I don't think it's your intent to have the council make decisions with regard to job descriptions and changing position titles, which are also in that same sentence. So it's breaking out the sentence into two sentences, changing one of them to have council through. I don't think the worst idea in the world would be for everyone to have a look at this paper. And I think kicking it out a week or the first year or whatever, just so you can see what you're doing. Because this is, this is a band-aid that everyone agrees on. I think you should see it written down first.
Councilmember Lengel.
What I would propose then is that you prepare the corrected language. I would propose that, uh, councilmember Naflin provides you with a copy of what Bockle is doing, just to keep the information flowing here about possible long-term solutions. So everybody's looking at the same thing. That that language comes back to us at the next council meeting where hopefully this budget stuff gets moved forward. And that we schedule the vote for the new language then, as councilmember Ira has suggested for the first meeting in January. That's the path I would suggest forward.
Councilmember Naflin. So I'm comfortable waiting to put this in only if you, you had mentioned that you would give assurance that you wouldn't make any further staffing changes until we can, can work this in. Because I, I really do think there have been a lot of staffing changes that do affect the budget long-term. And it could be that council would have been in complete agreement. And I just, I really do feel like this promotes more transparency, not less. And, you know, the way the code is written right now, it doesn't say anything about whether the mayor makes its decision based on whether it will conflict with collective bargaining agreements, whereas you know that, I mean, I think that's a given, that we all know that both council and mayor, when we make decisions, if there's a contract that supersedes that would, we would take that into consideration. So let me finish. So I just want to say that I am willing to move forward and put, allow our legal representative more time to provide something. But I still think I'm, I'm fine just doing something very simple until we get a robust personnel policy. And I think the Bockle policy is actually a really interesting policy because it does talk about aligning the process with the budget. And, you know, trying to get requests in at a certain time of the year, and it talks about how, you know, management is really responsible for maintaining an employee in their class. And so, you know, if you identify the need for more work, you don't just let that person creep into another position and force yourself into a reclassification, that really management is responsible for identifying the workload and keeping their employees in class. And of course, there's out-of-class pay and there's other, you know, temporary circumstances, but I don't want to go on too long. But, so my point was that policy is more robust, and I think we're looking more for, in the next month, or just as councilmember Ira mentioned, just something temporary. As we can observe what kind of reclasses are being requested, maybe it will help us understand more what situation we're in. And so anyway, I just want to make sure that we can get an assurance publicly that there will be no additional, like we, the budget, and that was one of the reasons we really wanted to understand, well, where are we now? There's a lot, I mean, I think I counted maybe eight positions have changed since the budget was approved. And that's a lot of changes since the budget, you know, since a year ago. And so we just wanted to say, here's where we're at right now. Let's not make any changes until we can get some financials understood and, you know, get another policy in place. So I, that's where I'm at.
Councilmember Heather.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to continue the conversation, I guess, because it, just like all the others, it's discussion slash decision. I didn't read into that being asked for a decision on it tonight.
Agenda was stated.
Okay, I must have missed that part. But I, I think it'd be good to continue, work out the wording. It seems like we've got a grievance on that. And I, you know, I respect what you've said about you're doing more than what is required of you, but on the same hand, I think our goal should be to get to code that trust has come up a lot tonight, but I think it should function whether or not trust is present. And I think we should all work toward that so that it really doesn't matter at the end of the day.
Thank you. And I will say, councilmember, I had a really productive conversation last week on this topic. And, you know, I'm more than happy, you know, again, just because someone says something in code doesn't mean I'm going to do it. And one of the discussions we did have is partly, the reason the full-time accountant came up is that one of the two qualified candidates is someone that the hiring group for the finance director was really interested in, and said that she wouldn't even apply for the job unless there was a potential that it might go full-time, which has been a long time discussion. So, and in fact, it was discussed in the biennial budget process last year. So I, you know, I obviously don't have any issues with that, and, you know, the code does need to be updated. There is a significant amount of code. We have code that hasn't been updated since the city's founding in the 1900s. And part of the challenge that we have is the issues that we need to address as council and communities well, where we would spend a significant amount of time internally updating and developing policies, HR related policies that should have existed and haven't existed. And getting to this personnel side, you know, there is a draft personnel policy that's been reviewed by local insurance companies and attorneys. We have some reform that I'm going to do before we bring it back, bring it to council, but a significant amount of time and effort is going to put in that because we do have things in code that are actually contrary to current state law as well. And so this is one of those big, long-term processes that when we start to get a better idea of what we need to do long-term financially, then we can start planning and parsing out code updates that need to occur and start budgeting for them. One of the budget notes we do have from the last budget is that, that changes will be monitored per the budget, and council approved a limited amount for code changes. There was concern by a previous council member about the cost of code changes. On the other hand, it's, from my perspective, it is a core function of us doing business. And I feel like, to your point in updating these things, is that we are not doing our jobs in the city, and we are not doing what we can to keep this updated. And so the internal HR policies have been a high priority. The personnel obviously is the next step, and we're in that process. And I do believe that there are some changes to this code that need to occur. Things could be more clear, but I do try and work with what I have. And, you know, everyone knows I have the best interest of the city at heart. I'm going to do whatever I can to make sure we operate efficiently, and specifically making sure the finance department is up to speed and providing the level of service that we all know is necessary, not just for this group of previous councils. In regards to, you know, just internal promotions and what have you, in my entire history as an elected official and history working in government, I do not remember a time where an internal promotion, unless it was a big promotion, for example, when, when the police chief promotes people to lieutenant or something like that, even goes through, is even talked about with council for a memo. But as I talk to other council members, I do not have any issues whatsoever when those management decisions are made and collective bargaining grants to provide a memo. And if that's part of our standing operating procedure as part of our internal process, I have no issues with that. That is easy. We just need to be aware of it. So, you know, a lot of these issues have come up in the budget review process, and that's fine, but I want to continue to ask for that collaboration and things festered before I was contacted by council members. And so I need, before things fester, I need to be talking to council members directly. And you also have to understand that sometimes council members have meetings, conversations with staff, that they feel council members may not have wanted to come to me, and that's okay. So sometimes, but Cat, I can tell you beyond a shadow of doubt, staff is communicating with me, but there is so much going on, they cannot communicate everything with me. And if I, or even if they do, just like one of the discussions at meetings, sometimes you hear something and it slips your mind because there's something else in front of it that you're focused on, and that happens, which leads to, again, part of the memorializing some of these things and putting in memos when certain things occur just so that council is aware. And so I definitely have no issue with that whatsoever, and I've talked to three council members about that. And as we get our staffing levels up, those things will be a little more easy to do. There are many things that we want to do or that we previously want to be done that we have not had the staff capacity to do. And we can get to a point where we can do those things again. And that is just the cold hard cut of the very understaffed of the city, but a level of work that we have at the moment.
Councilmember Hope.
I'm okay with moving this forward with suggested changes. I am disappointed that we didn't get a memo from you because in our conversation, you did tell me that you would have a memo to council by Saturday, and it didn't come through. So I would like to know for sure that you're not going to make any changes.
So the reason why that memo didn't occur is I have talked to another council member and asked, that council member wasn't sure if that was going to be enough, and I wasn't going to waste time on something that was not going to be acknowledged?
So your only reason for giving the memo is if we wouldn't bring this forward?
No, I needed confirmation from the council members bringing this forward that this was going to work on time. If this was something that was going to move forward regardless of what I brought forth, it's not a good use of my time, my limited time to do that.
Councilmember Iger.
I think you're referring to our conversation, and I, I just wanted to...
It's not, it's not, it's not a...
I just want to, and I know you're not doing it, I just wanted to clarify what I was communicating to you. I, you were asking, you know, kind of for assurance the memo would be sufficient, and I hadn't seen what the memo said. And so my comment was, well, I can't really, I can only speak for myself, and I haven't seen the memo, and I can't speak for anyone else. And so that was the, that was the feedback, and I guess you interpreted it, that I, anyway, I just wanted to let you know that was what I was trying to communicate, that I don't know what you're going to write, what you might write. I, I can't make a promise that I'm not going to want to support this based on an unknown memo.
And to be clear, before I even had the opportunity to sit down and think about writing a memo, we received the draft ordinance in City Hall, which sent a really strong message that that work was being done regardless of stopping and having a conversation. So that also makes it a question of whether or not that's a good use of time, what are minimums for the city as well. But, you know, again, my door is always open. I'm open to having conversations with council members and if people communicate, we can work through these things well. Councilmember Naflin.
I would say that it's always a good use of your time to reach out in a memo to explain yourself. And I think if you had written that memo, this could have changed. But you didn't. You made a choice.
I had other things I had to do.
Well, you know what? Do you think, do you think we enjoyed working on this because we didn't? We did not. This is not something we wanted, we wanted to do.
Point of order, I didn't think we're getting off topic. It's not germane to the, to the topic at hand.
I would like to move on to the agenda.
So we have not had any final motion postponus until a later meeting?
I move to we, that we... I moved to we, that we moved this item to the, I don't know when, next January meeting is? The first meeting of January two twenty twenty?
I would like to see it moved to the next meeting next week.
If Hillary Hillary can put something together, we can get it out. We can, we can decide to do something with it, we can decide to postpone it again. I just would like to see something by next meeting.
Councilmember Iyer?
I, I would, I appreciate the points brought up thoroughly. And I appreciate the necessity for concise action. I think, I think we can, I think it just be, it would just help us get through this year, and we can have it on the docket for first thing. And I think we have a pretty clear direction from council to our reasoning. So I, I don't think it takes any of the momentum from it. And I think with just the, like the mid-by, I think we should focus on that. I know this is a bit, but I guess I would ask that we just put it to the first. I have utmost respect for Councilmember Hough. But I think for, you know, productivity's sake, I think it would help us divide and conquer in terms of our workload.
Councilmember McHenry?
Just more of a comment that I was curious if we have room for a touch in the COW rather than at the council meeting, just to discuss it. I know we have a lot to talk about. And then with the goal being that it could possibly be ready at the first January meeting.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Matt, and I support that partly through a practical reason. Well, I appreciate you working on the language. I've seen a lot of language out there, and I think this is, we just want to get this right. And I think it's going to take a little bit of discussion. I do like the idea, if we have time at the next COW, putting it on there. Because it's going to take that kind of discussion, I just don't want to rush it because I think getting this thing right for council, for the city, is really important. And I've just seen so much language, I could try to piece it up together, but it takes a while for my mind to just let it settle. So I support waiting till, trying to do a final decision early next year.
If we're going to do that, I'd rather see a small amendment now, adding that it has to come to council. I think that will be put on there. I don't think we need to wait till January to start to talk about the whole conversation about this.
I, I think in the interest of moving forward, I, I would support, let's look at the next council meeting. Let's see if we can get it figured out by next council meeting. I just, I feel like we should move on. And if that's what it takes to put it on the next council meeting, I'll support that too. But I, I feel like I could keep, you know, my, my purpose or my, my goal would be to keep it brief and not shoot for the stars on this solution. And the January first solution would be the brief one, not the perfect one. But if, if, if the rest of the council feels that we're not assured that we're going to start talking about the grand plan in next year, that's not my intent of the January first meeting. So that would be, my intent would be the short, concise interim solution.
So, I just want a clarification then. So I, what I'm hearing is that Hillary will prepare the language at the next meeting, for the next meeting, we will have that language to deliberate at a COW. At that point, it'll still be on the agenda as at least a discussion, I don't know. It could be a vote, as we always present them. That, right, if there's still discussion, it could go to the first meeting in January. I mean, these things are not necessarily mutually exclusive, it's just that we have to have a path to a vote. So I think that's what I'm hearing, that we have an option. If everything is perfect and happy and blah blah for the seventeenth. But if not, we're looking at that simple thing for the first meeting in January. Am I, am I summarizing what the council members have said? I don't know for sure, I'm just taking a shot at it. That that would be the path.
Councilmember Iyer?
It sounds good to me. I, I think we should have it on the COW, and we can talk about whether we want to put it on the agenda at the next meeting here and-
Or the, or the first meeting in January?
Sure, that's my, that's my-
That's the path?
Two cents.
I second that, even though you didn't make a motion.
So do you think we should form a, maybe a formal motion?
I think we want to do a doping.
I would appreciate a formal motion setting the date for the formal discussion. Maybe the whole, that's simple, and I can only manage that, and that's an easy add.
Okay, I'll make the motion, but we have to take your other way to the locker table. You have to go simply.
Can I help you know-
Sure.
Currently, they have a very full COW. We can move some of those items off, so do you have the items that-
We have the summer stage wrap-up presentation, we do the library board present, annual presentation, IT yearly report- IT update, possibly other, and more budget discussions.
So we can move something off of their movement, I guess, to the regular meeting, but we just have to check with our partners at the library board.
And we can also talk about it just in the regular general.
Yeah, maybe summer stage could be moved as well to the-
We can wait until next year?
Oh, well-
And she's requiring a report.
I'll-
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just trying to get clarifications.
I guess my, my, if, my preference, and we've talked about this before, is the COW isn't really for presentations, it's really for that more informal conversation. So if there was a presentation that could be moved just slightly later and happen during the council meeting, I'd be fully in support of that.
Thank you all. So we'll, we'll-
Do we need a motion of some kind?
Do you think we need a motion? That's okay, I mean, it's normally personalized, but that's okay. So next is unfinished business. Approved resolution for a due-albeit final long file, S U fourteen dash zero zero one, for discussion and/or decision by Ms. Thomas. And if this is approved, we will take a short ten-minute break to make sure the documents get signed and get the director leaving tomorrow.
Somehow I needed a final path, I'm sorry. He only, he only brought me more chocolate, I swear.
It's because you've been dealing with it a lot.
So, as noted here, Steve LaNchez, State Farm Works, on behalf of the City Development Review Group, which is State Farm Works, we are at this point recommending approval of the final files. I appreciate your patience in letting us facilitate updating some of the documentation today. Final file document has been updated. It meets the needs of the city and meets all of our requirements. The fees have been paid, as-bills are submitted, oh, this is updated. So your council package, the question, does it have the updated packet? So, I don't know, all that is distributed. The bonds are in place. The only item not technically complete all the way, there's a couple panels of sidewalk here and there, which is fine, the parking lot, so that can be bonded for, and the four deferred delays, they're still not asking for delay, they're just, you know, managing for weather. But the sewer location, so the sewer, gravity mains are all in. Water main is all in, the roadway is all in. Sewer location is under construction. So we talked about holding any of the building permit review timelines. So general command can get approved, construction can begin. We will hold any plumbing-related inspections and activities until such time as sewer location is in operation. By the time you submit a permanent, get the permanent approval, and, you know, begin excavation, put your foundation in and all that, it's months, you know, a few months plus or minus. The sewer location should be finished in sixty days. It's well on their way. That is the only real outstanding item, working with landscaping and time of year and sensitive soils. So that's, that's all bonded for, it's not in. The parking lot, your last tube is in, striking remains. And we would want that to strike in wet and cold weather anyway, so that is bonded for. I'll send it back. Flat apps, all the articles. We already have these approvals before the joint parking agreement, the previous meetings. These various are installed, so they're ready to go. Questions, comments?
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve eighty nineteen dash seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please swing out. Motion passes. And we will now take up to ten minutes recess to get the documents signed.
It's under this one.
I'm sorry, I put yeah, I don't have this one, I'm sat right by him.
So next on the agenda is eighty nineteen dash eighty, agreement extension for due-albeit renovation for the arch, for discussion and/or decision.
To the mayor, council, and our key stakeholders. This is second touch, I'm just bringing up permit extension, which are also called permit approvals. And we provided a second draft to council. I currently working with Elizabeth Hill, DFA, she had some suggestive edits. And so those, just that in the meantime, I have not had a chance to see them. And so we're going to have a discussion on those edits. I've also had conversations at the M F meeting with council members about what kind of metrics would look like going over the next two years and what I would work with, with Elizabeth and DFA, obviously, as a whole, to come back and make sure that we're recording regularly. So my guess is we'll do a six-month check-in, sorry, in year, and then that second, that second year. So are there any kind of initial comments or questions? And we'll bring it back forward, not at this next meeting, because I will have vacation, but the first meeting in January, that allows me time to meet with Elizabeth as well. I don't need a motion from the board.
Are there any questions?
Okay.
Okay.
This is just, this extension is for the temporary site with the tent.
Yeah, it does two things. And so under our code, and that's why I work a little bit more information into here. So under due-albeit school code, working only as a mixed-use section code, it allows an applicant to have up to ten years to complete their process. And so they're, they were formally requesting that, which takes their request. So I wrapped that in, and that's of the approvals that went through the preliminary flat process. But we also have a specific DFA approval, which was a temporary use permit. And that, we also already logged in here as well. They historically are fairly limited in duration. And they requested an extension to be allowed to have it there for a little bit longer time so that they can complete their process of fundraising and getting their site completed.
So this agreement extension only applies to the temporary structure? Or does it also have overarching-
It has overarching site, sorry. It has overarching extension of the permit approvals, that's site and design review as well.
Okay.
Which they were granting as part of the preliminary flat. And our code allows for them to extend for the ten years. It's based essentially on economics and their ability to construct that building.
But within that, we have to consider the temporary structure?
I just rolled it all into one. And this is really just a voluntary agreement that council has to help direct staff as we move forward, as we watch our partners and to build up their project.
Okay.
Councilmember Hough?
I was just going to say, I think it's, you know, Elizabeth Hill has brought up several times, you know, building a partnership. And this is really a good opportunity to work on some of those things in a collaboration and, you know, try to help make the project work.
So we'll go ahead and remind the general, ninety-eight thousand dollars, ninety-one thousand, sixteen, twenty twenty, annual budget for some of the, maybe thirty-nine eighty, that pre-4, that one three oh, provided for severability and establishing an effective date. This is for discussion and/or decision. And to remind council and members of the public, this is simply made by any review. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Councilmember Hough?
I'm not sure, should we rehash everything we said at COW? But I mean, I feel like we talked about it a lot.
But if you already can afford, you're welcome to, otherwise, two things I lost opportunity.
There are just a couple things that I brought up during the COW. One is I'd like to see under this link, under revenues, under other, I would like to see, there's four hundred thousand dollars in there for the sale of the rec center. I'd like to see that pulled out of the budget, since we've not agreed to sell it. So there would be two line items for that to be, it would then have to come out of the reserves, since we have not sold it yet. And then I'd also like to see, maybe have some discussion about our flow chart and how it would look if we had a direct line from council to city attorney. Our city attorney is supposed to represent council, mayor, staff, so, but there's no real connection there. And I don't know if you want to look at that. Those are my two suggestions for changes.
Councilmember Langgo?
The thing that I don't, I'm concerned about, but does not necessarily have to be dealt with on the seventeenth, but I don't want to lose track of it, is continuing to go through that budget because I don't think we want to, should I say? I would prefer strongly not to take down beginning fund balance. And that relates to a hundred and eighty thousand. And so that should be, as we try to go through and sort out some of the things that you've discussed with our new finance director, I think we should really focus on not using beginning fund balance as an area of focus next year.
All right. So it does not sound like there are a motion, so we'll move this to the next week. But comments, unless someone wants to make a motion. Councilmember Iyer?
Does it sound like there are issues here for other revenue category, mortgage charge? And could you refresh my memory, please, where we left off? The other revenue, has one, or is that something we were going to try to change that table? Or, because it's-
Steve, then we looked at that during the Cal meeting. We were not sure that we can actually accomplish that with council from next week. And so, it's gonna take a conversation with our finance director to see if that can be accomplished.
Councilmember Iger?
Would, would that pepper, uh, the particularly cumbersome for the finance director?
We don't know and how we have conversations.
Are you concerned that that would be fair?
I'm always concerned with the new director, she's only, while she has started, she's only part-time. So for example, today she's here for a full day, tomorrow she's here for a half-day, Thursday she's here for a full day. So that's really a day and a half to do the things that have to be done this week. And so, I would personally, without talking to her, be concerned about her time.
Two numbers, I could do that.
It's not that easy, it's not that easy. If it was, it would be tough.
So, kind of, councilman Ho, the documentation in here, it's just, you know, backup documentation showing the changes to payroll and that, that's the intent. We did pull the budget ordinance of the document last December. I was hopeful it was kind of the whereas's and then the generalized list, like a lineage, but it's not. It's all in departments. So you, we would have to go share it out, where it actually comes and goes through, then bounce all that on all the sheets. Remember we pulled that, um, the actual document last? So, maybe, other things, the motion to amend as time gets forward from the first quarter, that's more than a dozen goes in and out, is, because if you do a budget ordinance amendment for one or thirty things, it's still the same amount of paperwork. We're gonna have a lot of things to go back and forth on, um, just cleaning up numbers and such, so.
Is there, is it easier, maybe Jennifer can help enlighten this, cause she knows numbers so well, but is it easier to put the four hundred thousand dollars somewhere under the expenditures, like non-departmental, cause if it was in there, it would probably show up better. Am I making sense?
I think, just looking, uh, Steve mentioned to me, and so if I look at this ordinance, what the ordinance is doing, the by I am review, is it's just saying, you know, based on the original budget and the amendments, that's what will be approved. And so unless we did an official amendment to the budget, so this, this is just confirming what we've done so far, we're not amending anything. And so, is that, am I getting that right? So we would actually have to go back and do a full amendment process because there's nothing.
My question has to do with the dollar amounts more than the amendment process?
I think that, yeah.
Cause right now, it just doesn't, it doesn't show up right.
So, I agree and I, but I, it might be better that we could make a note as a.
Whereas.
Yeah, whereas, that we acknowledge that there is four hundred thousand dollars. And that is not anticipated and so, you know, something like that. Because I, talking to Steve, I, unless we, you do have to make, you do have to amend the budget to change the numbers.
Okay.
And so, um, and I didn't understand completely that this wasn't a version of an amendment and what we were producing is now the new. All we're doing is representing what's been done so far. So this line has to match what was originally adopted and amended at first quarter. And so unless we do a formal amendment, right? Am I getting it right? So I, so I think a whereas statement, just acknowledging that there's four hundred thousand dollars in revenue that we do not anticipate receiving during the period, well, or I don't, something like that.
Therefore, an assumption that would be considered and should be changed is.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's sufficient just to acknowledge.
Good, yeah.
Councilmember Langue?
The problem with whereas is that they are statements of intent that not by. So, just like we clarified things in our ordinance with, uh, for public works, where we set some very specific objectives that are shalls in the ordinance, we can set a specific timeframe within which the documents need to be changed to reflect what councilmember Ho is requesting. So it's, it's, what I'm saying is, yes, we should put some, we can put something in the ordinance about in the budget, whereas's kind of don't count legally, so you gotta know that. And, um, and that's where you get into will, should, shall, right? Those are different little terms. But you can put forward your budget and also establish a very clear statement in the ordinance that says that by only the first quarter or whatever you feel is fair, that the documentation will get straightened out. That's, whereas is unfortunately just sort of not by date.
That's just the little way out.
I personally don't have a concern.
Sorry, I'm gonna write, I think the motion extended the meeting past nine thirty, you know.
I move that we extend the meeting past nine thirty.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, guys. In number C.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think it was, um, that's the term to speak, then I started.
I just were pretty much at the last moment and, uh, I think I understand the concern of the charter. Uh, but I think, just so to think that, in fact, questions somewhat, semantics. And, uh, I think we could outline so far, um, if someone could put together a concise proposal tonight, I would be supportive of whereas or some other mechanism to ensure that the needed edits are included, but, uh, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I guess, I would, you know, I.
I think it's time to clear.
Hold on, just gonna, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty nine, one hundred and two hundred and two, R C W, thirty five A, thirty four, one thirty, providing severability established in effect of date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? This will be the appropriate timing as well.
I, I'd like the budget notes added to this, they're not in there.
Well, budget notes aren't updated, I'm sorry, I shouldn't, they're.
They're not even.
They're not, um, there is all kinds of stuff, the budget is.
Can we add any questions?
I wouldn't, no. I mean, unless the budget notes are fixed.
Yeah, so section two, these exhibit two, budget notes, they're in the packet.
Oh yeah, it just says we re, um, those are right.
I think it's the budget notes in the packet.
There is, please, one, so.
Those are very right. But somebody made a motion to add over twenty.
If he has to rescind.
No, he doesn't.
Oh, we held it down, well, we can hold it down.
He doesn't have an amendment, he has a motion to approve the budget, uh, and made by any review. Now is the appropriate time for amendments to be made. We have a motion and a second on the floor, discussion or amendments, we have it now.
Well, then I'll discuss. I mean, the budget notes, this is where we got into trouble before. Budget notes have to be absolutely clear. As council has suggested, that council, not this council, shalls versus will versus should matter, it matters. And if we're trying to get ourselves on the path to accuracy and clarity, we've gotta fix the budget notes. So, I would say that we fix the budget notes, deal with however you guys wanna deal with, I mean, I, whereas is embedded, you know, that's to the council's pleasure in an ordinance and then vote on the ordinance in the next meeting with correct budget notes.
Councilmember Iger, um, would you like to stick to your original motion?
Uh, yeah, I think the, I think we've found that the budget notes are super effective. So I think amending the budget notes would be, uh, somewhat of a self-serving process. So I think we should just forego that and, uh, take this into, take what we know into the first of the year and take what we know into the next budget, into the next budget process. Primarily take what we know into that first amendment, that first budget, that first process. And mostly I make it amended because I don't foresee any substantial change occurring between now and next week and, um, and I think, I think it's reasonable that we, I think I'm ready to hold myself to, 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 to break either way.
Uh, please, please.
Uh, see, to assist councilor Iger, we could look at any practice that includes the warning shall, so whereas, administration shall remove the four hundred thousand K in general fund revenue from the four hundred thousand K restricted expenditure line by never eight.
And, within the first quarter budget amendments.
Yeah.
And just so that we don't have to have a separate process beyond the regular process.
And frankly, that sounds very reasonable and I think that, um, would be the mission for finance director. Councilmember Ho?
I'd like to see, um, respect what you say, councilmember Iger, but I would like to see something, I know that our budget notes may not hold any teeth here, but I really think that we should add something in here that, um, that no new jobs will be hired or, I don't really know how to say, what, what you've told us that you wanted to do there, I think should be added on our budget notes until we can see, until we can have time to talk to our finance director. You're not letting us talk to her until April.
No, that's not what I said. I said, I was asking questions and they know that since council, I ask questions to the director for me so that she can get settled and I can get her, her appointed. Uh, big difference than talking to her directly and she's going to finance committee to help, she will be sad and angry. Uh, it's a matter of, you know, this, where she comes from, councilor shall talk to employees and talk to city managers. Um, so this is a transition phase at this point for that. Um, so council absolutely can ask questions on direct level for me, um, and I can talk to her and we can manage that workload, uh, with her. Uh, so that is definitely not the case if there can't be communication. I have encouraged people to also go by, uh, her office when she's here and introduce themselves. Councilmember Iger?
I, I guess I would encourage council to oppose. I, I, it sounds like the amendment could be meaningful to council, so, if you could email it to me, I'll propose it as amendment, uh, and we can go on that and then we can move on to the budget notes by then and decide, if somebody wants to amend the budget notes with something, to the effect of what we discussed, then we can do so. But I think we should maybe get to this four hundred thousand part first.
We're gonna have it coming back to me.
Okay. Uh, but that would be what I would, would say would be productive. So, once I get that, I'll make that, once I get that thing, I'll, I'll propose that amendment, but I would say, I don't know, can we add to these budget notes somehow to, to capture that sentence or that expression? Uh, I'm not sure. Somebody more knowledgeable will figure it out.
Can't think of good answer. Can you?
I mean, really, I guess, a budget note we could add would be, um, reclassification request or shall come through a public process to be approved by council or I.
Sure.
I, I don't have the best language, I don't know. I just, I think that's the point we're getting at, you know, just that, if there's going to be staffing changes, shifting around of people, just, it can affect the budget and council would like to be involved in a formal way.
Mayor, please.
I don't wanna be too simplistic in life, I like something Warren Buffett said, uh, he made a multi-million dollar agreement with a company and he said, oh, where is your money? And he said, you need, he said, we just shook hands. If that's not with the, we're not gonna do this. So all I'm trying to say is, you know, mayor made a, you know, promised to us and I trust that she'll come through with it. And I think this is really key to us being able to move forward. Uh, is there some danger in doing that? You know, first one though, tell you that legal side, it's not writing, it doesn't exist. But I do think there's a place here in the city of evolved for us to say it's time to start trusting. And there's, you know, I, I think mayor understands what our concern is and, uh, I expect that she'll a hundred percent follow through and have good communication on any new positions or reclassifications until we get to the point where we see where our budgets at, uh, and it may take months. But I, I hate to complicate our process too much. I, I think there's a lot of budget notes, things I was talking about today that can be changed, things that can be clarified, um, I just, I think there's some wisdom in saying it's time to move forward. We have a lot of work ahead of us. Not a whole lot's changed in this budget process until we get the numbers from our new budget director. A lot of this is hopeful to me, but I, I hate to see the actual numbers. And I think until we get to that point, um, you know, we're also gonna start a grand budget year and just matter in months. A whole new budget process for two years is just a few months away. And so, there's a lot of things we've learned and I think, you know, we'll come together and say what we need to do, you know? So, we have so much going on in the city and I, and I just hate admitting by too much more detail. Pardon me, just wants to end the pain, if you'll forgive me. But I, I do think there's so much to be moving forward and building some trust and, and I think we'll be okay.
And, uh, councilmember Langue, like, councilmember Iger?
Um, I'm just putting this, you know, for us to, just for y'all to know. Um, I went through the budget notes, I told Steve that, um, uh, I, I was cool with, you know, going through them. These are not, these are clarifications, okay? They're not, aside from what councilmember Ho is asking for. So, you know, at least with that stuff that I'm talking about, um, they, they are not items that would have to, uh, change moving on a budget. There are, there are things we could look at in the first quarter and just get it all kind of sorted out. There, I think there are things we have agreement on, it's just that the way they were written before could be, could be, um, more clear. And, you know, some of them I'm not sure are gonna apply anymore. So, just so, you know, given what you said, I mean, I, that's kind of the, the edits that I keep adding. They're not mind-blowing.
I think that, that actually can be also done in the first quarter.
In the first quarter, the stuff I have to say is in the first quarter.
Yep.
It's fine.
Would you like us to add another RAS statement, that states that we'll add our budget notes in our first quarter as well? By the way, we sent in the email.
Um, I, uh, making a motion, am I amending?
Yes.
A motion to amend, uh, the ordinance on the table with a whereas, administration shall remove the four hundred thousand dollars from general fund revenue and remove the four hundred thousand dollars from restricted expenditure line relative to the sale of a physical property. An amendment shall be brought forward by administration at the end of the first quarter of twenty twenty.
Second. Any further discussion on that? I really do like that amendment, so thank you for offering that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. We've, oh, sorry, yes, the amendment passes. Now we have the underlying motion of adopting, uh, the budget. Now we have the underlying motion of adopting, uh, the budget, uh, the, for the mid by any review, uh, it's on the table, so, um, do we, uh, all those in favor of adopting the ordinance as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, thank you.
We've got two items of business left, um, one of which is, uh, just approving the 2020 legislative agenda, uh, making initial number suggestions, and I try to incorporate what, uh, council requested, uh, so I don't know, I didn't hear any feedback from council from that packet. Councilmember Iger?
Sorry, I, um, didn't follow, I don't know that. So I just saw a couple of things, I actually like the language that you used together for the transportation one. I think it's enough that we don't need to specifically necessarily list intersections, but that it, you know, alludes to the fact that we have little choke points. Um, so just really quick on the wording, when you added the wording that I suggested in your behavioral health, um, I think it should either be, as well as establishing a long-term goal of mental health centers in every community, or of a mental health center, because right now it says of, it's just a little.
Yeah, yeah, uh, if you like to make that amendment.
Oh.
Well, actually, we don't have a motion on the table yet, but when we get to that point.
And then the only other thing, I did, I didn't see a reference to that statistic of the city sees two-thirds of our traffic passing through. Is there a?
That was a tiny issue, so I, um, would need to contact Steve on that, so, um, and I have to look back on where we got the additional data, it was from previous traffic counts. Um, so that will, we can add that in, um, for the understanding, I don't have any issues with permitting, understanding of that, so we add it into the, the final, um, produced piece.
And then let's see, for mayor, under broadband, there's no period.
Oh, I can face it.
Okay, okay. That's all, yeah.
All right, um, so do we have a motion?
If we, that's.
All you have to do is say.
We need to adopt to, uh, approve the 2020 legislative agenda, AB 1991.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have any amendments?
So do I need to amend the mental health one, or is that just the title?
Uh, we amend the mental health one to make sure we get the language right, and then, then, then it's amended now. Print the document title, so.
Okay. So, I meant that we amend under behavioral health funding and support, the last sentence, word reads as well as establishing a long-term goal of mental health center in every community, we change to say as well as establishing a long-term goal of mental health centers in every community.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Uh, we have an amended motion on the floor to approve the 2020 legislative agenda as amended. Um, any further discussions?
You are going to add the?
Yep, yeah, okay, absolutely. Um, so, any further discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Final, I got on the agenda this evening, and it's a long one, the general bill 1992, approve resolution clarifying the existing annual inflationary adjustments to the parking pack fee, sewer general facility charge, water capital improvement charge, storm drainage period acreage charge, customer sewer utility rates, billing permit fees, customer water utility rates, customer storm utility rates, water utility fatter gur, sewer utility fatter gur, storm utility fatter gur, sewer equalization fee, roof permit fee, driveway use, use permit fee, traffic impact fee, and stormwater general facility charge. Your discussion and our decision. I'm going to make a motion to approve AB 19-92.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Iger?
We're going to be talking about thinking.
I don't know. You're smart.
So my only suggestion is potentially having a checkpoint period that's, you know, every two years with the mid buy to have it come forward. I just think it's, it's helped me to have this be transparent and coming forward publicly at a certain frequency so it doesn't get lost. So, councilmember Iger?
And make a motion to amend AB 1992, with whereas, the city council wishes to review the fee in the city every other year on the even-numbered years to make sure items are current and reasonable, and council shall strive to review this in May of 10 years.
Now we're obviously prepared.
All right, can we have a second to that amendment?
Second.
All right, all, uh, any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Uh, do we have any discussion on the motion as amended?
On the point of clarifications that we were acknowledged today, the new director didn't know, but we found that we, last time we discussed this, we had not passed new fees from the school district on the pack fee, so that was updated on the table. Without space between weeks of constipation, things get stacked up. That hasn't changed in a whole lot.
Councilmember Hoag, did you say that it has been changed now?
Yes, correct, yes.
That's what the court issued this afternoon.
Oh, okay, that's how you, thank you. All right, um, any further discussion on the motion as amended? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, and that, and the certain amendments, any further discussion on that?